All right, just checking, we'll do roll call at the beginning.
All right, I think we're good at six thirty, so I'm gonna start the meeting if it's okay with everyone.
Sounds good.
Okay, welcome everybody. And I'm following a script, so if I sound scripted, I am. As a preliminary matter, this is Mary Beth Lynch, I am the vice chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and staff are present and hear me. The affirmative. Paul George.
Yeah.
Thank you. Lisa Cosette.
Here.
Peter Mulcahy.
Present.
And Patrick Follen.
Here.
Great, thank you. And when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. We have Bernie Cahill.
Here.
And Christopher Polo.
Here.
Great, thank you. Good evening. This is the open meeting of the zoning board of appeals and is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public ass access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. For this board, zoning board of appeals, we are convening via telephone conference and video conference via Google Hangout as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. I, Mary Beth Lynch, will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for this participation item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions they may have. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold off your name until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask each member of the public who wishes to speak to identify themselves by their name and address only. Once the chair has a list of all public comments, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And that is that. So, welcome to this evening's meeting. Um, first order of business is a reorganization of our board. Um, for those of you who follow closely the zoning board, um, we had our chairman, um, of many, many years, Ron Rosen, had stepped down. As a result, um, I, as the vice chair, stepped into a temporary chairmanship position. And this evening, we have to formalize the upcoming roster of both a chair and a vice chair. So, to that end, I would like to ask if there are any nominations for a chair position.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mary Beth Lynch.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter Mulcahy?
Aye.
Paul George?
Hi.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, then next up, that leaves an opening for a vice chair. So I'd like to open the floor to ask for nominations, um, from the board for nominations for the vice chairmanship, please.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Cosette.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna go through roll call. Um, Peter Mulcahy?
Aye.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. So, thank you, um, very much. So we have a new and vice chair in place. And, um, that brings us to the second order of business. To sign bills, uh, we have one bill for Worcester Telegram and Gazette, uh, for September twenty eighth, legal notices for five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Can I please get a motion to approve this bill?
Motion to approve bill?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
And Peter Mulcahy?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I think at this point, Peter, uh, needs to step away from the meeting if I'm not mistaken.
That's right. Thanks all. Good evening.
We will, thank you, Peter, very much. Um, we will now proceed forward with a board of four. Um, and everyone has been notified of this change. Okay. Moving on to formal business, we have six hearings this evening and a request for a continuance. First item of business at our six thirty hearing would be a request for a continuance from our continuance on two fifty seven Main Street. Um, this was, um, an administrative appeal to section seven, three D and section nine for persons aggrieved by the action of the planning board. Can I get a motion for a request for continuance, please?
Motion to approve continuance. Uh, Bernie, can we confirm the time of the next hearing? I believe November twenty-third?
It's in fact, November thirtieth.
Thirtieth, okay. Motion to approve continuance for two fifty-seven Main Street to November, uh, November thirtieth, six thirty P M.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
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 Patrick Follen?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, aye as well. So moved. Onto our second agenda item. Give me one second, I just wanna make sure I've got everything I need here in front of me. Okay. Our next item. Um, Gabrielle Luna, do we have you here?
Present. Yes, hello.
Wonderful. Okay, this is for a special permit. This is to section seven B. This is to demolish an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling at property located at twenty-seven Edgewater Avenue. This is in the residence B two zoning district.
Mary Beth, can I, sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, is, um, who's ever sharing right now, can you stop sharing your screen for the moment? Somebody's sharing, I think it's, I think it's Gabriel's architect. Yeah, Ralph, Rafael Hernandez, I think.
Okay, Rafael, do we have you here?
Gabriel, he's showing, we're, right now, we're seeing his email, so.
Yes, yes, uh, I hope that he's, he, he can, uh, stop sharing, uh, his screen, I apologize.
That's okay. Do you wanna start speaking to your project first? Um, sorry to step on the chairs, uh.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, uh, what we would plan to do basically is to demolish the the current, uh, single-family home that was built more than, uh, sixty years ago and uh, we plan to go from an existing footprint of about five hundred square foot, uh, land. Um, I mean, the current house to, um, a total of fifteen square foot, uh, fifteen hundred square foot, uh, total, including, uh, basically e- each floor has, uh, about, uh, five hundred or so distributed in, in, in three floors. Um, and, um, and we plan to preserve, uh, and rebuild the sidewalk. Um, uh, basically abide by the height of of, uh, our neighbors, the same height of, uh, the neighbors', um, houses. We will also plan to move away from the land borders. And, um, and that's basically what we propose to do with the existing house.
I'm gonna show the plot plan now, I would. Can everyone see the plot plan? Mary Beth, can you see the plot plan?
I see it, and I believe it. Everything.
Okay.
Well, it's a three D rendering, it's not the plot plan.
Oh, that's not mine.
Sorry about that.
Rafael is sharing, I guess.
That's okay, that's fine.
I can, uh, I'm, so, I, so, I'm trying to figure out how to, so, if somebody's starting, I'll, I'll stop sharing so he can continue and then I'll share my screen afterwards.
Yeah, when it's your turn, that would be great.
Bernie, what do we have?
Now my mic's off, all right, here we go. Okay. So let's do the plot plan first and then we can go to Rafael and the three D images.
Wonderful.
So, this is the plot plan. I, Mary Beth, can you see it?
Uh, yep, I can see it now, thank you.
Okay, so what we have here at the bottom is what was, um, submitted with the application as the existing house. Um, if everyone can see that with the one-foot side yard setbacks, one and, one point two and, and point three in the back. Um, and then here up above is proposed and you can see five feet, more or less, all around, five point two on the sides. Um, and then a change of about one foot towards the front. So that is the, um, the two-dimensional plot plan. Is everyone ready to move on? Madam Chair, are you ready to move on to the three-dimensional renderings and the architect?
Yes, Rafael, go ahead. Do your presentation.
Thank you, Sherper. So as Gabriel mentioned, the the layout is about a five hundred and ten square feet per floor. Our scheme was to basically, because of the existing building being basically on the property lines and that, considering that to be a fire hazard, we decided to narrow the building and, and increase the height to a similar height to the adjacent buildings on either side. Um, also minimizing the number of side windows and using non-combustible materials on the exterior to further uh, increase safety to, on this property and also it makes a more aesthetically pleasing view from the street. So, but the houses don't appear to be on top of each other. And it's basically a modern style with a drive half, have a flight down, have a flight up to um, allow for off-street enclosed garage parking and multiple and on the, the 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 main level, it has an open floor plan, kitchen, living room, dining. And the, the, the second level has the two bedrooms and there's an office space guest area in, in the, in, in the basement with an egress window. Proposing a, uh, roof deck for so, uh, to allow for more outdoor space on, on the lot, on the property since the lot is so small. And we're hoping it's in keeping with the neighborhood.
It, it's actually more conforming at this point, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Rafael, did you wanna share the exterior three D renderings you had?
Uh, can you see it?
Uh, we can't right now, we only see the floor plan.
Oh, it's, this, I think there's a delay.
Okay.
Let's see. Just see. Wait one second. Oh, I know what I did wrong. Me, it's time to begin, share. You see it now?
Almost. Yep.
So we, we kinda modeled two properties on either side to give a sense of scale to the, to the current house to try to maintain similar heights and, and volume or, or less. The most windows are in the front and the back of a property. And then it conforms with the with the five-foot fire spread separation to the adjacent buildings.
Okay. All right. Anything else you'd like to show us before we give public comment?
Um, the existing building, I mean, one of the reasons why we are recommend is that the existing building ha- is cannot be salvaged. The foundation has failed. There is settling, there's cracking on the walls and it's an eyesore. And I feel that this is in keeping with what Shrewsbury is trying to do where these essentially infill lots are being upgraded to something that is more in keeping with, with the neighborhood.
Okay.
Mary Beth, did you wanna go to members of the board first before the public?
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry about that. Um, um, go through members of the board to see if you have any specific questions on this. Um, Lisa, do we have any questions?
Um, I do have one question, first one comment. Thank you for all the information you provided, it's very comprehensive. I did have one question on the uh, age of the existing home. Do you know when it was built?
Gabriel, can you run a?
Yes, I believe, I believe it was built in, in the nineteen forties.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, can I move on to on my screen? Uh, Patrick Follen, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to, uh, hear what the butters say.
Okay, we'll get to that next. Great, um, Paul George?
Yeah, I'd like to know the existing square footage of the existing building and proposed building.
The, the existing, uh, uh, square footage, I believe, is about nine hundred or so. And, uh, the proposed is fifteen hundred.
Which includes the garage.
Which includes the garage, uh, the enclosed garage.
And also, what is the height of the building, proposed?
I think the height of the building, I believe, is, uh, I, 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 um, Rafael, I believe it's about twenty.
Twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, yes.
Twenty-six feet and it's based on the building on the left. Uh, when you're looking at the property from the street, it's a little bit shorter than that building. And it's a little bit taller than the building on the right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? If so, can you, um, give me an indication by speaking up? And just give a minute, sometimes people's mics are muted and they have something to say and I don't wanna give a couple seconds?
I believe they can press star six, seven to unmute, no, stars six, I believe, to unmute.
Get up, if there's anybody out there looking to be heard on this matter, if not? Okay.
Yes, um, hi, um.
Can I?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. Can I please get your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Sanji and, uh, I'm the house on the right, I own that house, twenty-nine Edgewater Avenue.
Sanji, can you give us your last name, please?
Sure, oh, I'm sorry, it's, uh, Sri Vaswara, S R I V A S T A V A.
And you're, uh, what is your address?
Twenty-nine Edgewater Avenue.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
So this is the house, uh, if you are facing twenty-seven Edgewater from the street, this is the house on the right.
Correct.
And, um, um, I think I, I joined in the call a little late, but I think I captured everything. Um, I just have a couple of questions here. Um, does the proposed, um, house have any chimney fireplace?
It doesn't.
No fireplace?
Okay. Um, and I, I heard that.
Oh, did we lose Sanji?
Shoot.
We might have lost. Second.
I'm sorry, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, there we go, get you back, thank you.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I heard on the call that it has a non-combustible exterior. Right?
The, the sidewall, yeah, it's a, it's gonna be a sprayer metal standing seam type uh, facade to, to be in keeping with modern design.
Okay, so what siding will it have?
It's a metal, it's gonna be a metal standing seam. It's what it is, it's a flat panel with a vertical, with a with a projecting line and they clip together. That's why it's, they call it standing seam. It's used on roofs and in, in modern style buildings very often.
Got it. Okay, okay, understood. Um, about the roof, um, I have one concern here and I wanted some clarification is, uh, about the inclination of the roof, uh, for the snow part, because when the snow melts, um, I know there's an increased distance between the houses now versus of proposed versus what we have now. Um, is there any, um, likelihood of the when we have big snow, uh, the snow getting, um, kind of, um, onto our property from the roof. Uh, I'm slight, I, I did, I was not able to understand like, uh, when we are doing three floors, the floor inclination is that in any way going to affect the, the falling of snow from the roof onto, um, our property?
It's a, well, we're reducing the amount of impervious area on, on the on the lot by reducing the footprint.
Mm-hmm.
The driveway width and having a sidewalk. And the roof will have either a scupper or an interior drain to capture the water from the roof. And we need to discuss it with DPW if they want us to drain onto the street or the, like, into a storm.
Yeah, I mean, ordinary days, we, we should be fine, you know, I'm just worried when we have, uh, you know, the instances where we have like six, seven foot of snow, uh, getting accumulated because of continuous so, snowstorms. I'm just, you know, trying to understand from, from that, um, incidents happening and then, um, you know, what happens to all that snow, because I know there's a five-foot, um, distance, but, uh, with the inclination, when the, when all of that kind of falls off the roof, uh, it might come onto our building, probably. I'm not sure, I'm just trying to check.
But, well, right, right now is about a foot from the, the current building is about a foot from the property line.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's, it's no current.
It's different, the current house has a different inclination than what is being proposed. Uh, plus the height, so I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I, I am just asking as a layman, you know, if, uh, there's any kind of risk um, arising from that, because the, the distance is just not too much.
There, there, there's a reduce because there's more pervious surface to absorb. And also if we connect the roof drains to a drainage system that's either tied to, um, info, uh, ground infiltrating tanks or or to the, the city storm, then all that melted snow or water or will.
Oh, and then we are freezing temperature.
By, by law, we cannot have any water from our property go on to any other property.
Um, can I just interject, excuse me, sorry, can I just interject and say, questions should be going through the chair?
Sure.
Please?
Oh. Yes.
So, ask your questions through the chair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Sanji, um, are you clear on? I, I understand your question, I, I mean, this isn't, um, it's more questions rather than debate, so can you just?
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I'm not trying to debate, I'm just trying to get, get an answer here, like, you know, we know every other year we will have you know, instances where we have two, three snowstorms together and the temperature is still freezing. So the draining part of water, I understand that, but that is going to be very slow, but compared to the falling off of the snow from the roof, that's all I want to understand. Uh, with the, given the angle of the roof, is there anything that we should be concerned of or is it all okay? That's all I want to know.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Rafael, can you just give us a?
Yeah, through the chair, um, it's, do you understand what a parapet on a roof is? Basically, the, the, the vertical lines of the roof extend than the flat roof portion.
Sure, yeah.
The snow will be contained and the roof will be designed to carry the snow. And then
That's exactly what I wanted to know, you know, without going into
off the roof, right.
Um.
To the either side.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So that's all I wanted to know, you know, without going into like structural, um, details. The last question I have, maybe probably one or two more, is, is right now we are not sure, uh, because this existing structure used to be a part of, um, our house way back before the split. And then we got, uh, we got our house at twenty-nine built. Um, do you have any information about how the sewer goes? I, I was told and we haven't checked it with the town yet, I couldn't get an answer from the water department yet. Is, i- is the sewer right now from twenty-seven going into our sewer and then on to the main or are they independent?
So that's a question you're gonna have to address to the DPW. Um, zoning board of appeals doesn't have any information regarding that. Um, so you would want to call, um, the DPW department and they will put you in touch with water and sewer.
Understood, I will do that and thanks for that, but do we have any information on this, on the proposed, um, uh, design and plan that would either confirm or you know, kind of, uh, say anything about the sewer connection right now?
Right, so this isn't
Or later.
Sorry, I, I realize you're calling in, so this is, let me just introduce myself, I'm Bernie Cale, I'm the, uh, town planner. So, um
Nice to meet you.
And you, thank you for calling in tonight. Um, so the so in addition to my other question, so this is my other answer, this is not a site plan, uh, approval by the planning board, so they are not required to show utilities, the utilities will be taken care of, um, prior to construction and in conjunction working together with DPW to understand where, uh, the different utilities are located.
Perfect, thank you so much, Bernie, I really appreciate it. So I, I'll probably get some information on the current one from the DPW. And then, um, um, you know, we will have more clarification. But, uh, thank you so much for your, for your answer.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else out there that needs to be heard or would like to be heard on this matter?
What about you, three?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Yeah.
Can you please take your address for the record, please?
O- okay, just take one minute. Uh, my name is Joseph Thomas. I live on uh, twenty-six Edgewater Ave, across the street from the proposed house that I'm going in now. Uh, well, first of all, I lived here for eighty years, so I know the residents and I know the neighborhood very well, because I've been here a long time. But there's uh, huh?
You sure have, that's great, eighty years.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I, I, I have some concerns uh, about this house. I know it for years. It was, uh, I think it was the part of, of the house that the gentleman next door was talking. Uh, I, I don't know, I, if I can remember right, I think it might have even been a garage back then, but I wasn't positive. Uh, but anyhow, there's, there's, there's a few things here that uh, I'd like to uh, mention. And uh, first of all, I think this, the lot size is much too, uh, much too small for the amount of floor space you're gonna be putting up there. I mean, I don't know, anywhere in the town of Shuvi where you got less than a thousand square feet and you're putting on in a house on fifteen hundred square feet. Now that, that's, I never heard of that and I've been around a long time. But uh, I, I don't know uh, how the uh, board feels about it or, 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 or uh, how they, they're thinking on it, but I, I think it's, it's a little bit too much.
Okay.
Uh, there's a, there's a couple of, of other things, uh, the, it's, it's quite a modern house, but it doesn't, it, uh, that, that's fine, but it does not fit in the neighborhood because it's uh, three fours, it's a, it's a high building. And uh, the building is uh, is, is very high, I think. I mean, I know there's other houses around there and uh, but they've been built, you know, eighty, ninety years ago, most of them. So, I mean, it's, it's uh, but to put up a, a seventeen uh, foot building, uh, it's twenty-five to thirty feet high, that, I don't think it, it'll look good for the neighborhood. I, I mean, it's uh, kind of discouraging in fact. Uh, some of the other items that I think there is parking. We've had been parking, the people that lived there before, the renters, that we have trouble with parking, parking on the street, parking across the street, uh, parking on my lawn. Uh, I mean, there's, it's just, uh, there's not enough of parking there. And there's another thing about this house. This house shows two bedrooms and an office. Now you know that office is gonna be a bedroom because there's a bathroom downstairs. So, I know that you have to go under the office plan, but still, it's, it'll be a three bedroom and how many cars are they gonna have there? Uh, uh, another item is the snow removal. They take the snow from that side of the street when they shovel it and they put it on my side of the street. And uh, I have to go out there and tell them, at my age, it's not getting easier. When I was young, I can handle it. So, I mean, there's a lot of points there. And number, there's another thing is the greenbelt. There's not one stitch of grass over there. And there won't be any grass. Uh, I believe that something has to be done with the house. I'm not saying that they shouldn't put nothing there because they, they have a right to, I guess, having a house there now. But uh, I think they should go into a smaller version of this house somehow or another. There shouldn't be more than one bedroom. The house is only seventeen feet wide. Even this one, I think, is about twenty-four. Yeah, so, and they got one, I think it's one bedroom in there. So, now, now we're putting in almost, well, two bedroom and possibly three. How are you gonna park over there? You know, and, and it's, it's, it's really, this is, this is a new thing, but you can build something there. I'm not against the whole project, I'm just saying that I think this whole project, I think this plan should be revised and it should be revised down and to, and to accommodate for, for the size of that lot, which is only, I, I don't know, you probably know, a thousand square feet or less. Thousand square feet is nothing. And you're putting it in between two houses that have no land too. The other two houses, uh, the, the other fella that talked, he hasn't got a big lot there. His lot was part of that lot years ago. Now they sold that as an individual piece of land and that's on his lot down. And the, you know, it's just, it's just too uh, too condensed. We, we have to do something, especially the town of Shuvi, the way they want all this space and this open space and you're, and you're pushing in stuff like this, it's really not right. So that's, if I can get any answers on this, I'd like to hear some.
Thank you, Joseph. Appreciate all those comments.
Well, thank you for listening, yeah.
Really, that's, we're happy to listen. You have every right to give us your opinions. Um, is there anyone else that uh, would like to be heard on this matter?
Mary Beth, could we give a chance to the um, Gabrielle and Raphael to respond?
Sure, Gabrielle. Raphael, yes?
Uh, um, well, I just wanna say that we, we plan to have a melting driveway. Uh, we don't plan to have a, a lot of cars and it's a single family home just for my wife and I. And um, and we are also abiding by the same height that our neighbors have. We're not gonna be basically having a building that is, that has a height that is way higher uh, than our neighbors. And we're actually going away from, from the land borders and, and the existing home has two bedrooms, not one. It currently has two bedrooms. And um, and it currently has almost a thousand square feet. As I said, I think nine, a little bit more than nine hundred square feet as the, as the existing home and, and we're just making it more modern and more uh, advanced and with the current technology, we believe that using green energy and, and, and the current technology, we can achieve that. Uh, there is a lot of evidence now, these days, um, uh, a lot of tiny homes are being built where they're basically using the space uh, in a very smart way and they're optimizing the space tremendously. And I think that's what we plan to do. There is a lot of evidence nowadays.
Okay.
And, and we, we don't argue against what our neighbor is saying and we, we do agree in some ways with him and we appreciate his comments. And may I?
Well, my, my, well, my thinking is, yes.
Uh, could you, could you, second, um, Raphael, I'd like to give you an opportunity to respond, please?
Thank you. Uh, yes, and we're increasing the amount of grass area on the building by reducing this footprint and reducing the amount of paved area. And uh, the building, the living space is about twelve hundred and fifty square feet because the parking space, which would create an additional parking space for this property, takes up two hundred and fifty square feet and that bottom behind there, that's not really gonna be a bedroom. Uh, it's, it's, you have to go through the garage to get into that room. It might be a work from home office uh, at, at best. Um, thank you.
Wonderful.
Hello?
Uh, is there anyone else in attendance that would like to be heard on this matter?
Yes.
Hello?
Uh, I'm, yes, I hear you. This is Joseph?
Yes, it is.
Joseph, I just wanna remind you, we do have some other people that have some things to say. Um, have additional comments, please?
I, I can't hear you that well, ma'am. Hello?
Jo- uh, Joseph, we can hear.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we.
You're, you're, you're going in and out, I can't hear what you.
Mr. Thomas, we're gonna go to uh, um, another butter um, for comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, um, Bob McGinley, twenty, uh, twenty-three Edgewater Ave. Um, hello, I was just watching along, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
I, I was just, just following along and the only comment I have is I have some concerns about the snow removal from the driveway because it doesn't look like there's any snow storage there. Um, could someone explain to me, I heard the words radiant heat and that's fine as long as, are they gonna have a positive pitch out to the street so we're gonna end up with a, a skating rink out there after a major snow event? Because it's all melted and gone out there and froze? That, that is an issue on this street with melting with, where the pitches are because underneath, on that side of Edgewater Ave is actually the old brook that runs down to Jordan Pond, so it's always the low spot of the street, always has been.
Okay, Bob, uh, could I ask Gabrielle or Raphael to respond to that?
Hello? Hello? I'm, I'm still on the line. I'm, I'm Joseph, I'm still on the line. Because I like to make a, I like to make a comment on what the uh, the engineer or architect said.
Could you give us one, Joseph, please?
Huh?
Could you please give us?
I can't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not picking it up, no.
Mr. Thomas, we had another question come in, so we're gonna let the applicant answer that first and then you can ask another question.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, Gabrielle or Raphael, could we respond, please?
The snow will be placed in the five feet that we're, that we're narrowing the building on either side.
So I think that you're making.
There, there should be, like, apparently, they're, they're probably, the entire front portion of the building of this lot is paved. So they're plowing or shoveling or snowblowing the entire thing, whether on the street or, or into the, on, they have nowhere to put it now. Because of the pervious area, they should be able to place that snow on that strip of either side of the, of their property.
Thank you.
But you're showing painted walls where a negative pitch going into the garage. Is that what's gonna happen?
That will be resolved with a drainage system to stick it for, that's, it meets the DPW and the building code department.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Now you can say it.
Hello?
Hi, Joseph.
Yeah, I'm back on again.
Yes.
Yes, well, all the things that I, well, whoever to, whoever the, the chairman, chairman or who I'm talking to.
Yes, Joseph, go ahead.
Okay. What I'm not concerned about is, is this couple here that's doing the project right now. But I know that they're not gonna stay there forever and, and those, and, and what will happen is that we will get uh, other people coming in and it, and it creates more of a problem because there'll be more cars and, and things of that nature. So I, I, I'm not thinking that just tomorrow when he builds it, I'm thinking in a few years if I'm still around. But I do have young people here too that live with me on this uh, across the street, so, you know, I'm saying that uh, I don't know on, uh, how long this gentleman is gonna live there before he decides to sell it. But uh, I mean, it's an awful big, it's an awful big house for a little piece of land, that's all I can tell you.
Okay.
And.
Thank you. I'd like to try to let anyone else speak, Joseph, if that's okay. Um, is there anyone else in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Uh, I would like to, uh, I have a question.
Can you please identify yourself with your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, my name is Pavna Srivastava and I am uh, from twenty-nine Edgewater.
Yes, Pavna, please proceed.
Uh, I had a very valid point, which must, uh, I don't remember his name, but from twenty-three he pointed out, so when they have, even though they are talking about radiant heating, when we have the snowstorm, the snow is go, going to melt and we have our basement right next to the house. So does that mean all the snow is gonna come into our basement and on our property? Will it be melting onto our property and because the house is, used to be a small garage of our house? So now, it, it is too, it is too small to.
What's the angle, gradation?
Because what is gonna be the angle of the, you know, the, uh, the driveway, is it gonna be, right now it's at the li, same level. So if they are doing the same level, all the snow, the radiant heating is gonna go melting in our basement and we'll be flo, we'll have floods. So which I, I'm actually very valid about now.
Sure.
So, um, um, we would like.
I would defer to uh, Raphael to answer the question.
Can I answer that question? There will be perimeter drainage for roof drains and the driveway that goes into the basement level that will be, that will remediate any water issue on our lot. We cannot have any water from our lot going onto other people's properties. It has to be remediated and it has to be approved by the building department and by the DPW. So we will make sure that that is done.
Raphael, can you also confirm that the driveway is to be pitched towards the house, correct? Not towards the street?
Yes, it is pitched towards, uh, because it's a half a story down and half a story up to keep the building as low as possible. And there will be a trench drain at the base of the driveway where the door meets the driveway and it will be properly drained to the approved storm or alternative options of drainage. But, and I'm a civil engineer.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Yes, ma'am, this is Sanjeev again. Just very quick question around this topic. On the, on the side yard, if we can call it, whatever, the five feet something distance we have, um, what is on the ground? Is it gonna be paved or grass or? Any idea right now?
Raphael, can you answer that question?
It will be grass on either side all the way through. We're gonna try to maximize the amount of impervi- pervious surface by reducing the footprint of the building and reducing the width of the driveways so that, and under that grass, there will be probably a French drain type system that will take the water that lands on that surface to, to be properly disposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I do wanna just step in and, and um, just make, make sure that everybody understands that, um, we are, the board is required to um, review section seven E of the zoning bylaws for the conditions for a special um, permit. Um, the board must find that the proposal will not create a nuisance by virtue of noise, odor, smoke, vibration, traffic generated, unsightliness or other conditions detrimental to the public good. I just wanna remind everyone listening that that's what our um, our criteria is for approving a special permit. Um, is, with that being said, is there anyone else in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Chairperson, could you ask Joseph if all his concerns have been addressed?
Um, Mr. Thomas, can you um, let us know if all your concerns have been addressed appropriately? Well, not appropriately, but have they all been addressed? And it looks like Joseph is muted. Um, okay.
One other question?
Paul.
Increase of building size?
Well, we're.
Is it, is it under fifty percent increase?
Uh, we, we're gonna get to that in a moment. We can have discussions amongst the board. That's okay, Paul. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Uh, I'd like to ask for a, uh, we need to close out the public portion of this, please. Can I?
I make a motion to close the public comment for the hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Patrick Fulan?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. Okay, let's get some commentary, please, from the board members. Um, Lisa Cosette, what would you like to add? If anything?
I always like to add something. So I, I have no questions. I really appreciate the appellant's information that they provided and I very much appreciate hearing from the abutters, their concerns. Um, I do feel, I'll just give you where I'm at with this. Um, we have a current, uh, we have a pre-existing situation here. We have a home that could have been a garage at one time, but we have a home that was built in what we think are the nineteen forties. Uh, at some point, the lot was split from the neighboring lot and this lot. And it is a legal lot of land with a structure on it that our appellant is uh, wanting to make some changes. And it is a legal lot of land with a structure on it that our appellant is, uh, wanting to make some changes on. And the changes that they're proposing are actually, uh. Less non-conforming than they are today, they are making a lot of improvements. Um, in that regard, so I'm in support of what they're asking to do and I, I, though I feel for the, uh, abutters. I believe the, uh, existing conditions that they're dealing with will be much improved by the fact that this structure has a garage. That will take parking off of the street and off the driveway, much of the improvements that. We've heard regarding the driveway itself and its pitch should alleviate any concerns for the abutters in terms of. Uh, snow buildup on either side, they're actually going to have. More green space, if you will, because the footprint is smaller, I could go on and on and on, but I feel the appellant has done an excellent job. In, uh, explaining what they're trying to do and I do not see what they're going to be doing as being detriment, detrimental to the public good. In any of the ways we're supposed to consider for a special permit, so I, it was a long-winded reply, but I'm, I'm in favor. At this point, until I hear other discussion.
Thank you, um, Patrick Follen, do we have any discussion, please?
I just wanna know is, so how, the houses on either side of, uh. This new one, were they both built in the forties?
Raphael, could you answer that question?
I am, I, I could look it up on the assessor's database and there, if you give me a minute.
I'm, I'm just curious, is that? Out of place this is gonna work?
Um, did you close the public hearing, Mary Beth?
I did close the public hearing, Bernie.
So we can ask the applicant any more questions?
Oh, right.
Okay.
So I might respond to that one, Patrick, if, if you don't mind, um. So we could, we could check the records, but, um, I've driven by there and also you can see on Google Maps or the GIS system as well. What, um. I believe this structure, though, stylistically not in keeping with the neighborhood, most of the houses are larger. Um, two-story and of that same timeframe. Um, this is a very small lot and small house in comparison to the rest in the neighborhood.
Right. Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Patrick, Paul George, do we have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I just have a question for Bernie, if the increase of the square footage. From existing to proposed, the increased percentage is.
Um, I don't believe it is, Patty Sheen, uh, so the zoning enforcement officer did take a look at this and she did not. Uh, bring up any issues with the increase of being more than fifty percent.
Okay.
Can I add to that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Clarify for Mr. George, what I believe in our records, it's the existing structure is nine hundred square feet, the livable space. In the new structure is twelve hundred and fifty square feet, that does include. Over, I, I don't know what the dimension is, five hundred square feet or something of a garage, maybe more. Uh, but we can't have Raphael or anyone else comment, so.
That's correct, Ellie.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Paul, any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. And I, um, I would say that, um, I absolutely understand and admire all the questions, comments that have come from. Um, all the neighbors and, um. I do think that, um, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming situation and I. Um, I do believe based on all the information that we have that, um, it will, um, end up being a better version of what's there. Um, so I tend to be in favor of this as well. Um, to that end, I'd like to, um. Motion, please, to.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the special permit for twenty-seven Edgewater Avenue.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye, so moved. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending the meeting.
Thank you, woman member.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, on to our next six-thirty hearing. Uh, second, I just gotta. Okay, our six-thirty hearing. Uh, just give me one second. Uh, the address is forty-four Tanniger Drive, Jason M. LeBeuf. This is for a special permit to section four B to construct an addition to existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. Do we have Mr. LeBeuf in? Attendance today or anyone representing him?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Louis Minona, I am a project manager with James LeBeuf, uh, representing Jason LeBeuf.
Welcome, Louis.
How is everybody this evening?
We are doing great, how are you tonight?
It's great, once again, I, we went through this, uh, a few months ago and I really appreciate the style of this meeting, it's like, my chair is very comfortable. Sitting here at home.
I'm glad you think so, I can't wait to get back to regular meetings, but that's just me, I. I need to see people, but I proceed. Louis, would you like to tell us about the project, please?
Yep, not a, not a problem, uh, so the, uh. Proposed project is to, uh, add a master suite on the right rear of the home. An extension of the kitchen, um, and a living room, dining room, I think, uh, Bernie, did you have the, uh, plot plan?
Yes, I'm, I'm sharing it right now, I believe everyone can see it. Madam Chair, can you see the plot plan?
Bernie.
You cannot, okay, all right, one second, let me try again, I will. Oh, wait a second, my computer's being difficult, let me try it one more time. Okay, let's try that again. How about now?
Yes, it is, Bernie, thank you, here we go, all right.
All right, so, um, so in, in the process of, uh, putting this project together, uh, actually Patty Sheen was the one who, uh, informed us that the. Existing home is non-conforming because of the front setback, which, uh, is required to be. Thirty feet, now, uh, I don't know if we can see it on here, I know I also submitted a, the plot plan that's on file with the town. Um, as well, but the existing home is actually twenty-seven feet, um, setback from the front. Uh, and just kick the special permit, uh, requirements for us to do any alterations to, uh, a non-conforming home.
Thank you.
Bernie, I'm sorry, Bernie, do you have the other plan that, uh, I submitted by any chance, that was, that was on file with the town?
Um. I don't know if we do have it in our folder. I do not, but the bottom line is that it's twenty-seven feet, the current plot plan that you can see is, um. Twenty-three feet, which of course I stopped sharing again, um. It's, it was because it was measured to the stairwell and not to the side of the house, so it's actually twenty-seven feet, the proposed addition is actually. Um, three feet off of the ten-foot setback that's required on the side, so the addition will be within the required. Side yard setback, it's just the fact that the front yard is, uh, not conforming, that makes this a special permit.
Got it. Oh. Louis, anything else?
Nope, that, I think that's good, uh, Bernie explained it perfectly.
Wonderful, is there anyone in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter? Let me give it a couple seconds. Anybody looking to unmute? All right. That being said. I'd like to formally ask for a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved, do we have discussion from anyone on the board, Lisa, I'd like to start with you?
I think this is just a formality, the addition the appellant would like to, uh, add. Has nothing to do with the existing non-conformity, it has nothing to do with the front yard setback, so I have nothing, I have no issue with it.
Thank you, Paul George. Any comments, questions?
Not at this time, no.
Patrick? Any questions, comments?
No.
And I have none myself, can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special permit for forty-four Tanniger Drive.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. Moved. Wonderful. Okay.
Okay, just wanna say thank you very much and, uh, enjoy your evening.
You're welcome, Louis, enjoy, thank you. All right, you too. Wonderful, we're gonna move on to our next six-thirty, um, this is to hear. Sorry, um, this is for. Keith Riehlend, this is for a special permit. Section four B to construct an addition on an existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, I feel like I'm repeating myself. Sounds, it sounds. For the evening, um, do we have, um, Mr. Riehlend in attendance?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Keith, before, oh, go ahead, Mary Beth, I just wanna put up the plot plan before Mr. Riehlend begins his presentation. So if you could just bear with, with me a second. Okay, should be shared, go ahead, Mr. Riehlend.
Good evening, everyone, I hope, hope mine goes as. So my, my wife and I, uh. As we have aged, are starting to age, are just. On our, uh, on a first floor living, uh, which we currently don't have at this time. Um, and given our, it's a classic nineteen forty-eight Cape. And we decided the best place to look to do an addition would be on the side, and as you know, there's already a small structure on there already, so we wanted to just continue to build on that side. We also started going in that direction because we initially thought, since it, that in our mind, there was a side yard that we had more space to go. Um, one, and two, uh, we thought our property was mu, our property line was actually much closer to the actual road surface. Uh, I have a satellite photograph, it actually shows that our, our property line sits at least ten feet off the road surface, as you can see, where our property line actually is. So it kinda gave us a misinterpretation of where we actually were. But the thought process was to add on to the side because it was most in keeping with the design of the home, it would best look in the, in the neighborhood and fit in with other homes in the area. Um, so our, our plan is to put the bedroom on that side, uh, which obviously gives us, uh, an issue with the setback. Of course, the way, with the reason we found out, um, in talking to a friend of ours, that is, since we actually are sitting on a corner. That that actually is a frontage and we need thirty feet and not the ten-foot side. Um, and as you'll note on the plot plan, the house currently doesn't meet, uh, thirty feet basically on any side. Uh, as it was built in nineteen forty-eight before the time, so we're already tight, in most of our, most of our places. Um, so really any place to do an addition was gonna be, um, within the limits, within the, the unacceptable limits or, or not, the non-setbacks. So, um, this is really our best bet to put in a master bedroom, we think it'll, it'll fit well. Uh, we're also sitting, uh, Beacon Street and Marlborough Street are both, um, dead-end private roads. Um, there's only four houses up here, um, and out of them, most of them are also non-conforming because the most of them are older or were built on. Grandfathered in plots of land, so, you know, we, we, we don't feel this will add any detriment to the, to the neighborhood at all. Um, and it'll keep us in a neighborhood that we really wanna stay in, uh, rather than having to move to another home.
Great. Thank you very much, is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Going once. Going twice. Okay. Thank you very much, like to, uh, get a motion to close the, um, public portion of this hearing, please?
I'll make a motion, I'm just surprised that Noah Butters are here, okay, um, I make a motion to close. Public comment on this hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Did you see me?
Yes, Patrick.
Right.
Okay, wonderful, Paul George?
Aye.
All right, aye for Mary Beth Lynch, so moved. Uh, so we've got the, uh, public portion of the hearing, we get some commentary from the board, please, Lisa?
I just wanna confirm, this is for a special permit, Bernie, not a variance, correct?
A special permit.
Looking, okay.
Yes.
I have no. Comment at this time, I'm really interested in hearing what Paul has to say.
I bet I know, um, Patrick? Do we have any comment from you?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Paul?
Yeah, I was concerned why it isn't a variance, is it because it's already non-conforming?
Yes.
Oh, Bernie, you're muted.
Muted.
Sorry, I'm trying to stay on top of that, sorry, Paul, good question, it's, um, so it's already the front yard setback is at thirteen feet and not thirty feet. So it's an increase of the non-conformity and existing non-conformity, it's not a new non-conformity.
But it makes it a special permit instead of a variance.
Yeah, they're not making a new non-conformant, conformity.
That's it.
Okay, wonderful, I would say, um, I. This house that you bought it from, and I remember always being intrigued by which was the front of the house and the side and the back and the. Corner and where it was.
Yeah, it aims at the corner, it's almost like either, either street could be the front.
It's one of those lovely little neighborhoods that you wouldn't even know existed unless you went up there.
Yep.
Or I don't really have any questions, just comment on, um, on that, so, um. That being said, let's get.
So, hold on. So I've been, normally I have something to say, but I, I'm struggling a little bit with this, so. If I could just hear opinions from my fellow members, um, so this is. Uh, increasing and existing non-conformity, we, we have no trouble when. We're hearing about a existing non-conformity becoming decreased, you know, the changes you're making are, making it less so. I do understand the challenge, this, um, and had it been a variance, we would have heard. About hardships, which we're not hearing. Um, what, but what's throwing me over the edge toward approval would be the fact that Noah Butters seem to have an issue. Um, they didn't show up. Um. I, I think, just hold on one moment, I wanna see what else is in, what, what, the floor plans and elevation, so just forgive me. While I just look at this. And I know we've closed it for public comment, so I can't have the appellant answer any more questions for me, but let me just look.
Hello?
Oh, and I have an echo.
Hello?
Oh my, I'm on TV, I guess, I hear my voice.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we've closed this hearing for public comment.
Can, can anyone hear me?
Uh, okay, Bernie.
Yes, we can, we can hear you, the public hearing has been closed, are you here, are you here to comment about, um, Beacon Street?
Yeah, I was, I'm in a butter, but I was, I, I was pressing, um, star six to unmute, but it just, it kept repeating to me to continue to unmute. I just had one question, uh, for, for the relance, but it sounds like it's closed.
Um.
I mean, I, I think we should allow it, I mean, it's, we had no way of knowing that he was sitting there and he was, I think, trying.
Agreed, so.
And I, I have your, um, I have the live stream and, but I, I also have the phone on and they're way out of sync, so that, that, I, that, yeah, anyways, it was a bit confusing.
Could we just have a, um, sorry? Could we just have a, um, sorry, just, let's just cover our bases. Could we just have a quick vote of the board to allow the question to be heard?
Sure.
Yes.
I, I move to allow a question after closing the public hearing for comment on twelve Beacon Street.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. And I just want to be clear to, uh, anyone listening. We, um, closed the public hearing and now just reopened it because we are trying to give someone the benefit of speaking that was not being we, we did not hear them, just to make sure that it's on the same page. Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Could the caller, if you didn't already, could you just mute your, oh, sorry, thanks.
I may ask for the caller to please identify themselves by their name and address.
Yes.
Whatever it is in the background that you're listening to, we, we can hear two, two of you.
Oh, oh, I don't, um, hmm, hold on a minute. I hope I can fix that. Yeah, like I say, I could not figure out how to, um, be in one or the other. So I had the phone on and I have the thing streaming. So I should be muted now. Can you hear me through just the phone?
We can. Thank you.
Great, okay. Uh, yeah, so my name's Roy McKinnon. I'm at twenty-six Commonwealth Ave, uh, in Shrewsbury. I know the relance, we've, we, we, we tried to battle a, 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 uh, an addition that, that, that affected both of us, um, or a, a duplex that went in. My only question for the relance is, um, is the height of the addition going to be, you know, conforming to the height of the house? Or are they planning on making the, uh, the addition higher than the, than the, than the house?
It's actually lower than the main peak of the house.
Okay, that's, okay, yeah, that was my question. I just didn't know if they were going to be going up, um, you know, uh, versus, uh, just trying to conform to the, to the, uh, the current roof height, so.
Okay.
That was my only question.
Well, we're glad that we got you to ask, to give you time to ask your question.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Hi there.
Up.
Hi, um, I'm actually in a butter to Beacon Street since you've allowed the previous question.
Could I?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Sure. Can I ask you to identify yourself by name and address, please?
Hi, yes, my name is Nolene Turk. I'm at two seven three Maple Avenue. So I'm kind of below Mr. Riehlend. I'm at the start of Beacon Street.
You, uh, repeat your address again, please?
Two seven three Maple Avenue.
Okay.
So my house is like on the corner of Maple and Beacon.
Okay, got it.
I, I just Sorry, may I go ahead?
Yes, please. Please proceed.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make a comment because I know you were concerned there were Noah Butters on the call. So I'm in a butter and, and I just called in to listen. I, I got a copy of the plans. It appears quite reasonable what Mr. Riehlend is doing, so I don't have any issue with it.
Well, thank you. Well, called in to, we appreciate that. Very nice. Um, is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? I'm going to give it just a few minutes because I certainly want to give everyone a chance to, um, comment. All right.
Madam Chair, I make, I make a motion to reclose the public hearing part of this hearing.
Thank you, please.
Okay.
All right, um, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
And Patrick Fulon?
Aye.
And Paul George?
Aye.
Mary Lynch, aye. Wonderful. Okay, let's, um, can we get some commentary from the board here? Did we already get to that? No?
Well, I, yes, we kind of did. And then I, I, uh, was talking about my struggles. So, um, I, I feel better now that the Butters were able to comment. And, um, this is an unusual lot because it's in a corner lot and it has its challenges in trying to meet the setbacks. So I'm, I'm fine now that, I really appreciate the Butters trying hard to give comment and, um, I, I appreciate the chair for allowing that. So I'm, I'm in favor at the moment.
Wonderful. Patrick Fulon, do we have anything? Patrick stepped away.
Oh, I'm ready. No questions.
Comment, questions. Okay, Paul George, anything?
Yeah, I just have, uh, one comment to make. Mary Beth, before each hearing, you should let everyone know there's only four board members. And there's only one vote against them to defeat the article.
Good point.
That should be notified. And besides that, I have no other comments.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, it's a good reminder. We did send everyone a notification this morning that we had a four-member board. So everyone has received it, but it's a good reminder to mention it again, Mary Beth.
Yep, thank you. Too many reminders and things to remember. Uh, you have no idea.
Uh huh.
Get a, uh, a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the special permit for twelve Beacon Street.
Can I get a second? All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Patrick Fulon?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Congrat- Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving along, we've got another six thirty meeting. Hearing, rather. All right, so, um, give me one second. Okay, this is to unam- amend a variance. This is, um, for seven twenty-seven Hartford Turnpike, uh, located in Limited Industrial, uh,
Mary Beth, I have fourteen Stoneland Road.
Oh, I am so sorry. I am so, so sorry. Let me go back one. Um, this is to here. Um, this is for a special permit for fourteen Stoneland Road, resident B two, Jennifer O'Brien, Gilmore Building Company, Inc. This is for a special permit, section four B to construct a front porch. Do we have Jennifer O'Brien or her builder here? Looks like Jennifer's here. You can do star six, Jennifer. That should unmute you. I can see Jennifer's looking to speak but is still muted. So we'll give her a second to unmute.
Why don't I go ahead and share the plot plan while she's doing that? And, um, yeah.
All right. We've got a plot plan. And then Jennifer disappears from my screen, so I don't know if she is, sure she's here somewhere. Do we have Jennifer here? See if I can unmute her.
Don't believe you can. Um, Jennifer, you can try calling back, uh, or star six, I believe, to unmute.
Give her a second. Can anybody see her? She's not on my, um,
So I see her in the list and it's not via phone, so it, um, she's joining.
I see her. Jennifer, wave to us. Let us know you're here. There we go. Okay. Um, can you try at the bottom of your screen? There should be a unmute button. If you click on it, it should get you on.
There we go, sorry. If I tap, my, um, bottom bar was locked, so I couldn't unmute, but hello, everybody.
Welcome, Jennifer. Can you give us an idea of what you're looking to do, please?
Okay, so it, it's an existing nonconforming, um, side and rear setback. Um, the house, and we want to, my client wants to add a front porch that will not make it any more nonconforming um, to the front of the house. And I think in the package you had a front elevation, um,
Can we share that?
Yes, I can, I can share that for you. One second. Can everyone see that?
So there's the, that's the existing plot plan. You can see we're adding the front, um, porch, which is like less than ten percent adding of the, uh, square footage. Um, and there is a drawing too of what the front elevation. So this is the existing house. Um, and they just want, it's a family house and they're keeping it in the family and they just want to, um, make it a little bit more updated, a little bit, and have a covered entry for when they come in. Um, and that's pretty much it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, is there anybody out there that would like to be heard on this matter? Any Butters? I'm going to give it a minute, let everybody decide whether they want to chat. All right. What do you think, guys?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to close the hearing for public comment.
Thank you, Lisa. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Paul George?
Uh.
Patrick Fulon?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. Wonderful. Okay. Do we have some comments from the board, please, Lisa?
I have no comment or issue.
Paul George?
No comment.
Patrick Fulon?
So the only thing that would be, uh, adding to be nonconforming is just the overhang of the roof, like two feet?
Correct.
So Patrick, the, yeah, it's not, it's nonconforming, but it's less nonconforming than the rest of the house.
Right.
The house angles away from the lot line.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, fine. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the special permit for fourteen Stoneland Road.
Thank you. Second, please. All in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Patrick Fulon?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Congratulations and thank you for, um, waiting patiently for us, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Yep, you too.
Okay, on to our next six thirty hearing. To, um, amend a variance. Um, this, the address of the property, seven two seven Hartford Turnpike, um, TJ CF Realty LLC. Um, amend a variance to section six, table one, to amend two thousand and two variance granted under section six, table one of the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws to operate an auto repair garage is voted upon in the January twenty-third, two thousand and two hearing. Um, can I? Is there anyone here in attendance representing the TJCF Realty LLC group, please?
Yes, good evening. It's Peter Vemus, engineering associate.
Hello, Peter. How are you today?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, good. Why don't you let us know what you'd like to do, please?
Okay, well, um, I, I realize you have four members and I also realize that there's a board selectmen matter that needs to be discussed on this property as well, which is a, a garage. Uh, because this is for auto repair. And, uh, that would require the selectmen actually weighing in on this as well. So I was advised that the, uh, the board would need to continue the meeting this evening uh, to allow the board of selectmen to make findings at their meeting on, on November tenth. Uh, and then we would be able to proceed at your next meeting with the full consideration of the matter. Uh, however, I, I am inclined to want to outline with what I'm proposing here, if, if it's at all possible with the time available. And I, and I know you're missing one member. Um, and I tend to not like going into these types of matters when the, the unanimous decision by the board. But at the same time, I really feel like this is a, um, a very good project that we're making a, um, a product, property that has not been, had any improvements made to it, uh, since basically going back to the sixties. And, uh, this would give it a chance, um, to be reborn, uh, with this proposal. So I would, um, I guess I'm inclined to go forward if the members would allow me to continue with the presentation.
I think that's fair. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, so TJCF, uh, that's, uh, RJ Foley. Uh, Mr. Foley has a uh, facility on Route nine, which is, uh, Foley Motorsports, uh, where he sells, um, uh, new and used cars. And this facility would be for just the repair of cars. So this is not intended for, uh, automobile sales at this location. Um, and the existing site has been the home of a number of auto repair dealers, or, excuse me, establishments, going back to what I believe to be nineteen sixty-nine. So what I found for the first variance of record was in sixty-nine. Um, there's no decision prepared at the registry of deeds, but there was a record of a decision by a zoning board uh, from Shrewsbury in, in, um, would have been October twenty-fourth, sixty-nine. Then there's another one in, uh, nineteen seventy-eight for, uh, DeFalco. And that was for, uh, auto repair. And, uh, that had more of less a general, uh, auto repair, uh, allowed use. And then in two thousand and two, the board made what I would believe to be a very restrictive use in that uh, Shrewsbury Transmission came to the site and, uh, they were going to operate here. And they, uh, in the board's decision then, you only allow the repair of transmissions in this facility. Um, so I felt as though, uh, it was incumbent upon us to at least bring this matter back before the board. Uh, because typically when a variance is issued, it, the variance goes with the property. And so going back to sixty-nine, when you allowed an auto, uh, vehicle repair facility here, it, that use should have been able to continue long as it continued to occur at the site. Uh, but apparently there was, it was revisited in seventy-eight and then again in two thousand and two. Uh, so by revisiting it here in twenty twenty, we would like to at least get this to be a um, traditional repair facility and, uh, and deal with a couple of the other, um, matters that we have found, uh, for it. So, uh, the site is, uh, defined by a fence enclosure. Uh, the fence and enclosure goes around the boundary of the property on the, the north and south sides. Um, the fence is, um, somewhat limited and missing, if you will, across the rear. Um, so the, um, the way you can see the north arrow here, even though Route twenty is kind of an east-west corridor, um, we are, um, we are west of, of South Street. Um, Shrewsbury Lumber is our abutter to the, the northeast. And, uh, the town of Shrewsbury is our abutter to the southwest and to the north. And, um, the, uh, the site is bounded by Route twenty on, on the south. And you can see the driveway there uh, in the, uh, upper right of the sheet. And, uh, our driveway enters there. And thank you for the hand, Bernie. I'm not used to being able to do this without pointing, so, uh, thank you. And if you follow the hand into the lot, uh, we're suggesting a formal parking area across the front of the site. Where our customers would be located on the west side. So there's nine customer spaces, a handicap space, and then there's basically an open slot to get to the building um, through that part, because that's a, a van space there. Um, we have five employee parking spaces along the, uh, would, would be the north, if you will, northeast. Uh, and then the fence, uh, so there's an open gate. Um, the gate would allow the vehicles to be parked in the rear of the facility. Uh, and what we drew there for the base plan is thirty parking spaces, because if you go back to the Shrewsbury Transmission decision, it said thirty parking spaces. Uh, so the language was very specific in how many spaces they could have at the rear of the facility. Um, and then also we're showing where the dumpster would be located. And then there's a few containers out there for the storage of equipment. Those are all existing. We don't intend to, to move them or change them. Uh, and then you can see the facility itself. Um, there are, uh, existing doors, uh, to the facility, and there's an existing shed at the, uh, the rear. Thank you, Bernie. Uh, that shed is in, it was in deplorable condition. It's actually already been removed uh, from the site. Uh, the goal would be to put, uh, two new entry doors at the front of the building. The existing one door at the front of the building, and it's again in not very good condition. Uh, and then at the rear, there'd be two entry doors, uh, as well, for being able to bring vehicles, uh, into the building. In the, uh, lower section of the building, near the, where those handicap parking spaces are, is where the office um, area is. And so there would be some clerical space there, uh, and a greeting area for, uh, customers coming in to have their, uh, vehicles repaired. Uh, this plan also identifies where the new sewer connect septic system. Uh, sewer was run as part of a municipal septic system, uh, sewer was run as part of a municipal project, and the betterment the physical Oh, there is a, um, gas and oil separator, which the facility does not benefit from today. Uh, then the sewer connection, uh, going to the street, and then we also we should bring in this is also identified on the plan. Uh, this is a little over five acre, I said, five, fifty thousand square foot lot, so a little over one acre of land, um. It's, uh, eighty thousand square feet is the minimum area requirement for a limited industrial parcel. Uh, this use is not an allowed use, um, it's allowed by the variance, which the previous boards had already, uh, granted. Um, in the most recent with the, uh, restriction on just transmissions. The, uh, building does not afford it, uh, ADA compliant egress, uh, the new building will be, obviously, we, we provided the parking spaces for it, and we'll also provide the, uh, entry, uh, requirements for it. There, um, there's a second exhibit, Bernie, if you wouldn't mind, uh, showing the other plan, just so I can get that, uh, presented as well. Um, so this is what we would prefer to do with parking spaces, um, again, it's behind the fenced-in enclosure area, so from our perspective, you're not gonna see any of these parking spaces from the street. Uh, and it would just afford the, uh, the user group here, uh, the benefit of just having the ability to, to have more cars here, uh, for, for repair. Uh, Mr. Foley has a fairly successful business on Route nine. Um, he, uh, he sells a, a, quite an array of cars, and, um, having them, uh, available to be repaired at this facility would be, uh, most helpful for his business. Uh, so we're showing, um, the same allotment of cars in the front of this, uh, building, so there's still a one handicap van space and one uh, regular, uh, handicap space, if I told them two, and then at the rear for repair, um, we've got twenty-two on the rear row, uh, fourteen, two, a bay of double tens, and then, uh, five singles. So that's gonna bring us up to, uh, thirty-six and, uh, what, sixty-one at the rear, um, versus the thirty. But again, it's, it, it's all spaces that they're not gonna be seen from the street, so that would be our, uh, our preference. Again, this par, property is located in an industrial, uh, district, limited industrial district, excuse me. Based upon the previous decisions, there's obviously been this hardship that exists with this site, um, and garage repair has been a, a constant, uh, use for about fifty years now. Um, and we'd like to continue with that use going forward. We feel as though, uh, this is a, a good investment to be made at this location. Uh, I know when I, when I first went to the site to do our survey work, we met, uh, the owners next door, at least we thought would be the owners, the Shrewsbury Lumber folks, and, um, the, they're the operator that say they don't own it, but, uh, they were, uh, looking forward to anybody who would come here and clean this site up next door. So, uh, they received me with open arms and gave me the phone number of the owner, and I spoke with, uh, them as well, and the owner was, uh, encouraging us to get the project improved as well. Uh, so I think that this, um, does bring a public good with the improvements that are gonna be made, and then, um, having a repair facility at this location, uh, Shrewsbury Transmission was there for a number of years, uh, so they, you know, did allow a diversification of available repair shops, which, uh, hasn't been present now for a number of years. Uh, so we'd like to get that, um, that use, uh, reinstated at the facility. And, uh, we're not looking for any relief that wasn't previously granted, um, if anything, we're just trying to get that heavy restriction for transmission repair only, uh, lifted, uh, from the site. Um, I'd also add that there is an existing sign at this location, I did submit to you a separate cover letter with the sign. Uh, however, we are only putting a new skin on the sign, so, uh, when I spoke with, uh, building department, they agreed that we would not require any action by the board. So the sign is a pre-existing nonconforming sign, but it does not require any relief uh, from the board to be able to put a new skin on it, so nothing would change in that regard. Be happy to answer any questions, and if I overlook something, uh, please let me know, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, procedurally, do we discuss?
So I would just see if any members of the board have questions at this time, um, and then if there are any, he can, uh, Mr. Bemis can answer those questions, and if there are not any, um, the board can move to continue to November thirtieth.
Thank you, um, Lisa, do we have any questions?
Uh, I just want to confirm that the, uh, the current operation has, has been for transmission only, not general repairs, and that's what you want to have changed? Or were general repairs being done on site?
I have no way to know what the previous, uh, user group did, uh, the, the sign did say Shrewsbury Transmission, so my belief would be is that that's probably the primary business that they conducted. Um, but, once the vehicle was in there, I don't know if anyone would know what repairs were done, I, I just, I found it somewhat troubling to see that they had limited it just to that use, um, because I think it would be very hard to, uh, monitor.
Sure.
Timeline.
Right, okay.
I have one other question for Bernie, I think, so, the number of vehicles being stored in the additional parking spaces, is there a requirement for the fire chief to, uh, give us comment on that?
So there isn't a requirement, we probably would ask them, um, through the building inspector to ask, um, the fire chief. Uh, what you should know is this is going to go for a garage license before the board of selectmen on November tenth. So, um, they will be limiting, they will be determining with the applicant the amount of spaces on site. Um, so in a way, it lifts that burden somewhat from the board, I suppose in theory you could be more restrictive, but in the path, in the, excuse me, in the past, uh, ZBAs tended to, um, go along with what the selectmen have restricted it to.
Okay, and they'll, they'll be, that will be a concern of theirs, so it should be covered, okay?
Yeah, those are really the two changes, is to amend the variance for, so we're gonna have to still do it, the board would still have to do, uh, uh, an amendment to the variance over thirty for whatever number that ends up being, and then the amendment from transmission to general repair.
Okay.
So, and I don't know why they restricted it in two thousand and two, I looked through the minutes in the decision, it's not clear.
Yeah, so that was my other question, what would have been the rationale of the board at the time, and we, and of course, Mr. Bemis, you can't answer that, um.
Everyone, I was on the board at the time, and it was, and there was other activities going on that was not allowed. So we put a stipulation that only what he wanted to do, transmission business, to be done on that property. That's why it was changed to just transmission.
There's the story.
There you go. Now, Paul, comments, questions?
It is a public hearing, Mary Beth, so you probably should just ask if there's anyone with a question.
Um, is there anybody in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter? And I, well, while we're waiting.
So now, oh, sorry.
Mrs. is a magician, got the mute button, but I can hear him. I can't figure that one out.
Does someone want to speak?
Anybody out there? Okay.
Can I ask one, what, before you, just before you just close out, I just wanna bring up one other thing, so the only thing we didn't talk about was the architectural. Um, so we, we have a building permit that we have filed, and we, we wish to continue to, to operate, I, I was disappointed to not be able to do this this evening, I, I misunderstood, um, the board of selectmen part, um, because I fully expected you folks to be able to render a decision and, and make a condition on the, the property, and expected the board of selectmen to be able to do exactly the same thing. Uh, but then I learned that the selectmen like the decision to be made, they, they give you like a, a finding, and then you roll it into your decision, is kind of what I was told. So, um, we, we, I'm gonna lose another month. And that's what's hurting the most, um, so, we, we're willing to proceed at our own risk with this building, and we're, we're, we're trying to make an investment here. And, um, we have a building permit that's at the building department, I have a lot of improvements to make to this building in order to improve its, its look and appearance. And I, I realize I can't get a decision from you this evening, but I would like to be able to continue and proceeding at our own risk. Um, knowing that I still have to appear before you again in a month. With this building, because it's just, it, to lose another whole month is gonna hurt a great deal.
Yeah.
So I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't believe the Board of Appeals has the power to grant any sort of temporary allowance to continue. Um, I think you would be better to speak to Patty Sheehan, the building inspector.
I'm not looking for the board's permission to continue, I am looking for the board to not take issue with the fact that I would continue, because I believe I can proceed at my own risk, there is a record variance for this property. So that's how we would operating is that, we, we looked at this and said, alright, there's already a decision here, that says that I can only repair transmissions inside this building. Mister, uh, Mister George knew the history of that, they were trying to be restricted to that previous operator because of something that may have gone on before. But I didn't know that, I know it now, I'm glad to hear it, actually. So that encourages me.
Bernie, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, if they were to proceed at their own risk, and it was to get denied, we, we, you know, we're, you proceed at your own risk.
Then the, basically they'd have to undo anything that they weren't allowed to do. Um, at this point, I would say it's between the owners and their attorneys, what they believe they can proceed with, I don't believe this board can offer an opinion.
Right.
Okay, alright, that's fine, I just, I, I wanted it to be in the open, so if you were to drive by and want the board to feel like we were trying to say one thing at this meeting this evening and do another, that's all I wanted to just be open and upfront about it.
Mm-hmm, fair enough.
Alright, thank you. To the next meeting, uh, I'd be grateful, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, Paul, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering, why can't we vote on this tonight? Why do we have to wait for the selectmen decision? We've always done it this way in the past.
No, if you recall, for even just this year, um, at, was it, oh, I'm gonna get the address wrong, Boston Turnpike, so for any license, whether it's license, class one, class two, or a garage license, the, um, board of selectmen, uh, weighs in first, and then the CBA weighs in second.
So we can't make any decision at all on this, sorry?
Nope, correct, yeah.
Correct. Anything else? Okay. Patrick, anything? Patrick, anything?
No, any questions I had have been answered.
Okay, thank you, um, Lisa?
I was just going to make a motion, Madam Chair, to continue the hearing for seven twenty-seven Hartford Turnpike to November thirtieth at six thirty PM.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Uh, Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Mary Beth? Aye, so moved for continuation.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you. Okay. So, we've got one more hearing, everyone. It's a six thirty hearing, and is to hear the appeal, um, of Mindy, Mindy McKenzie of forty Colton Lane, for a special permit to section four B to demolish, replace, and expand a deck on an existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. And Mindy, we want to thank you so much for your patience as we waited through all of those, um, ahead of you. Um, Bernie's gonna share the screen, and we're gonna see, okay. Mindy, I'm gonna open it up to you, if you'd like to explain to us what you'd like to be, like to, uh, to proceed forward with.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think it's the cue for my dog to start barking, now that he's, that she's been really good the whole meeting, so I'll apologize in advance. Uh, yes, uh, as, um, I've submitted, I have, uh, forty Colton Lane, I have a, a deck that is, uh, falling apart, and in disrepair, existing, and the house is, uh, existing, pardon me, pre, nonconforming, single-family. So, uh, the deck will be replaced, and I'm, uh, adding a deck, abutting the house, as you can see, the proposed deck in the drawing, it's just going to connect them, because the, it's really kind of not usable right now, the way it's set up. Uh, it kind of goes off from one room, and we're going to, um, change the the layout, so that way we'll have access from the kitchen, so hopefully there'll be a barbecue or something in the back one of these days, so. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to say is, it may, um, it doesn't show it on there, but I did notice whenever I was pulling up the, um, the plot plan from the town, it doesn't show it, but off the existing deck, there's, uh, like, fieldstone patio that goes all the way to the fence, as well as it kind of wraps around the entire deck, that's all coming out, and that's going to be a grass area. So, I'm, I'm reducing the patio, which is actually, I think it's like twenty-five by eleven, that, that kind of goes around the existing deck, and I'm taking that off, so I'm, I am improving the, um, the impervious area, so. That's about all I have, it's not gonna be anything, any different, it's just going to be replacing it, because it's not usable right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody? Uh, so, can hear myself, please, thank you. Um, is there anybody that would like to be heard on this matter? Got a couple numbers out there that I can't identify, so I'm gonna give it a minute to see if anyone would like to unmute themselves, neighbors, to be heard on this. Okay. Alright. There's no further comments, can I get a motion to close?
Hello?
Oh, see, here we go.
Hi there. Oh, hi.
Hi, hi, Mary Beth.
Okay, we've got two people here, wonderful, alright. Could I ask somebody to please, um, state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Flinna Lee, thirty-eight Colton Lane. I'm the owner of the property.
Oh, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, um, well, I just heard everything, just want you to know, I own the house there, next door at thirty-eight, and I actually have someone else living in the home right now, renting, um, but I have heard it, and I have no issues with anything, just wanted to state that.
Oh, fantastic, well, thank you, that was very nice of you. You're so patient, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Might have a second person out there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Mary Hathaway, I live at forty-two Colton Lane.
Hi, Mary.
How are you?
We are great, thank you for joining us.
Good, so I was happy to see, um, the plan, uh, of what Mindy has going on back there, and I just wanted to say that we don't have any issues with it either, I did have one question about how she was, um, setting up the fence, is the fence going to be connected to that deck, so it's all closed in?
Mindy, could I ask you to address that, please?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you, um, no, I'm not planning on, actually, I'm gonna talk to you about how we, how we work the fence, because I wanna make sure it it lines up with what you have, but that would be a separate issue. But no, I'm not gonna have it connect to the, to the, uh, to the existing deck, and I'm taking out the the deck stairs that actually go down to your property, that's gonna be removed.
Okay, okay, good to know, alright, we'll talk, I guess.
Yeah, for sure, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, anyone else, uh, wish to be heard on this matter? And then there was nobody. Think we're down to, okay, can I get a motion to close the public portion of this hearing, please?
I make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing for forty Colton Lane.
Thank you, can I get a second, please?
Second.
And, hey, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Uh, Patrick Follin?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, so moved, any conversation around this, Lisa, I'm gonna start with you.
Uh, so it doesn't look like this is going to be any more nonconforming than what's already there, even if the appellant removed the existing deck, there's, uh, the house is still within the forty-foot yards, uh, yard, foot setback, um, so I, I have no issue with what's being proposed whatsoever.
Great, thank you, Patrick, anything from you?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, and Paul George?
All set.
Wow. Fantastic. Um, I thought you were gonna ask about snow load back there. Okay, I am good with this, I think it's, um, going to be an improvement, and, um, we always like to see that, so, um, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve, oh, and I didn't even see, it's a special permit, again, duh. I make a motion to approve the special per- I make a motion to approve the special permit for forty Colton Lane.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Lisa Cosette?
Aye.
Patrick Follen?
Aye.
Paul George?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye, so moved. Congratulations, Mindy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Have a good evening.
You as well. And I get a, I think we are.
We have one more issue. Well, first of all, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mindy. You can stay on and listen to our discussion about rules and regulations if you want.
I'm gonna turn you off.
Obviously, this was one of those meetings that I think of, in person would be, you know, a lot easier to, to do. But I think you all did a really good job. It was challenging. We had some technical difficulties this evening, but I think we did a good job getting through them. So in your, obviously you'd have packets as well, so they're not in your packets, but on the Google Drive, what the zoning board staff have done is we've updated the application that applicants use for variances and special permits. We worked as a team on this. Special thanks to Rowan McAllister, our intern, who is no longer interning with us, but she spent a lot of time on this, working with staff to update it, to make the application more accessible to the public and to people who don't always come into contact with zoning and land use language and laws and rules. And we think it's just gonna be a lot more streamlined process for us and for the applicants. And, and for you, hopefully, too, right? We're gonna get better information and hopefully it's less stressful for everyone all, all around. We do, however, the applications fall under the kind of the umbrella of the rules and regulations. So we need to have a vote on it. That's why we had to do a legal notice. The only thing changing in the rules and regulation is not anything really of substantive nature. It's just reflecting what is in the, it's more administrative. It's like reflecting what's in the new application, so numbers of copies that are due to us, electronic copies, et cetera, but nothing in terms of actually what's being produced or given to us or what we're asking for them in detail. So that's the only real thing that's really changing the rules and regs. Otherwise, it's an update to what are, I believe, twelve-year-old application forms. So it's been a while since they've been updated. So we include links to certain documents and websites. We have dropdown lists for online formatting to fill in documents. So we're really just looking for your vote to approve these changes. And then going forward, we can start immediately putting these online and handing them out to applicants. So if you feel you're ready tonight to vote on it, you do have to, it's a public hearing. So you do have to close the public hearing if you think you're ready. If you want more time, we can do this at the next meeting. It's up to you, but it's up to your comfort level. If you want more time to review, that's, that's fine, too, of course. So I'll hand it over to you, Mary Beth, and you can lead it from there.
I, I did get a quick chance and it looks easier, which is what we want. So do we have any discussion? Wait. Nope, I have to open it up to the public. Out there. So we can make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
I make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye, Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
So moved. Um, so we need to make a motion, Lisa?
So I just, I would make a motion to approve, I just, a, one of our members is not here, Peter, and any associate, but the, one of our members isn't here and he may have some comments, but.
If you want to push off deliberating, yeah, if you want to push off deliberating, Lisa, you can do that and you can deliberate at the next meeting.
So I'm, I'm okay going ahead. Like you said, Bernie, it's been how many years since we updated this? It can only be improvements. So, and then if Peter has an issue, next year we can revisit it, I guess.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
So I make a motion to approve the zoning board of appeals application rules and regulations.
Thank you.
They appear in our Google Drive.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye, so moved. Congratulations, Bernie.
Thank you.
And they're really good changes, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Glad you liked them.
Yeah, I think the general public's gonna like them, too. Much easier.
Very helpful.
Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting of the zoning board of appeals of October twenty-sixth.
Can I?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, so moved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Please bring back regular meetings.
Yes.
Yes, oh my gosh.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Happy Halloween. I'll see you after Thanksgiving. That's our next meeting.
Wonderful.
So it's a, it's a little bit of a stretch this time, so enjoy the time off.
Right.
Thanks.
Fun, happy evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Bye, everyone. Bye, thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.